Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our April seventh Denellen Borough Council Meeting. Our first item on the agenda is a call to order and the rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number two on the agenda is the reading of the Sunshine Statement Roll Call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lauren Stats. Item number two on the agenda is the reading of the Sunshine Statement Roll Call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lauren Stats.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of April seventh, twenty twenty five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January ninth, twenty twenty five, and as the teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website on April fourth, twenty twenty five, and on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on April fourth, twenty twenty five, and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Solento?
Present.
Council President Sigmund?
Here.
Mrs. Albertson?
Here.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark noted absent.
Okay, before we move on to the remainder of our agenda, I'm going to ask council if we can make a motion in a second to amend the agenda to bring up resolution one fifty five, which is a resolution to put appoint Denise Donato as Court Administrator for the Denell Municipal Court. Her family is here, if we can bring it up to the top of the meeting, I see she has young children, maybe they get back home and get to bed early before school. So council, you're okay with that? Can we have a motion in second to a motion to amend the agenda as so?
Second, Rios.
Move it.
Okay.
Okay. That's amended. Do we have to read the resolution as a first and second?
Uh, yes.
Okay, can I have a motion in second on item number one fifty five, resolution to appoint Denise Donato as Court Administrator for the Denell Municipal Court?
Move it. Second, second.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes. Denise? Left hand, right hand. I, Denise Donato, do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state under the authority of his people. So help God. Congratulations.
If I may speak really quick about Mrs. Donato, Denise has been with Denellen for how many years now? Two and a half. She started as a violations clerk, made her way to the deputy court administrator and is now leading our court as the court administrator after filling in a few times. But she, I think rightfully so, has the position now full time, no longer acting. So congratulations. God bless you. Keep up the great work. Okay, next up on our agenda is presentations. We have the presentation of our budget being presented by our Chief Financial Officer, Scott Olson, as well as our Business Administrator, Alex Miller. So. And you have the presentation?
Yes.
Beautiful.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So so we're getting close to like six months. I think we've been working on this, right, Alex? When this, when this all started towards the end of, the end of last year when we were Alex was asking department heads to put together what they think they were gonna need to spend in twenty twenty five. And so here we are at the end of, of that process. I'd like to recognize some folks who worked a lot on this, on this project. Of course, it was all the, all the department heads went through reviews with Alex and Dawn Hutchison played a, played a key role in those meetings as well and putting together some of the data. The administrator, Alex, myself, and Lauren was involved too. I want to note also our, our audit, auditors, Supple Plunian Company and our bond counsel, which is Matt Jessup from McManam and Scotland Boundman, and we had NW Financial Group that was also involved in a lot of this activity also. So with that, tonight is the introduction and approval of the budget. It's not the adoption of the budget. That's gonna happen a month from now. This is a unique item in municipal government because it's the only time that there's a, that there's a meeting and then a public hearing that's a month later. And if we're, we're required to have that at least a twenty eight day span between, between the two dates to give the public adequate time to take a look at things. It's the only time you'll see this. You, you'll see ordinances where there's an introduction and then a public hearing at the next meeting. But this is at the meeting after that. So it's unique in, in municipal government. So it's, it makes it a little bit different. So. I guess I gotta point it at the laptop or what? Okay. Thank you. First time, first.
There you go. Just pointed like that.
Yeah, I was going to the next one.
Okay.
Can you go to the next one?
Sure.
Oh, down to go.
Down.
Oh, okay. All right. So here we are, April seventh, the, the budget introduction. It's a requirement to have an advertisement of the budget, which will go in the paper this Thursday, and then the public hearing adoption, as I said, on May fifth. So. Recapping, what is, what is a municipal budget? What is a budget? Well, it's a, it's a spending plan. It's an idea of what, what you think you're going to need to spend and how are you gonna come up with resources to, to cover that? It also includes a capital plan, which you'll see later on today. There is a bond ordinance which encompasses the, almost the entire capital plan for twenty twenty five. And it includes discretionary and non-discretionary spending. So the non-discretionary spending are things like health insurance, pension costs. The discretionary are just, you know, every, everything else. But less than ten percent of the budget is discretionary spending. Most of it is, like I said, is group health insurance, salary, contractual salaries, retirements. It's the, the match for social security and Medicare and our debt. So these are some of the items that were driving this year's budget. We had a huge, huge healthcare costs, big, big increase. And my understanding is that next year is going to be bigger. Double digits, upper double digits too, like, you know, seventeen, I don't know, seventeen, nineteen, who knows, percent increases, which is just very difficult to keep up with. We have taken though proactive measures to try and get around that or get, get by it. So one of the things that we've done is we've introduced a, a, what's called a difference card program so that employees can choose a lower costing premium, but they get the benefits off, offset by using the, this difference card. And that has saved the borough some money. We have a more efficient phone system that's projected to generate savings this year. Another thing that was driving this budget was last year, the Board of Public Utilities had a big, big increase on fire hydrant, the servicing, the fire hydrant, so the, the water for that. And so there was water, gas, natural gas increases, electricity increases, and we're feeling that impact this year, the full impact this year, because it happened towards the end of last year. Pension and social security and contributions were up one seven percent, and the debt service is also increasing. Our debt service is how we pay for some of the larger improvements. Those that cost more than five thousand dollars, which doesn't seem like a lot, but nowadays it is. So our debt service is increasing. And we're, but we, we have a way of offsetting it by using other monies to try and cover some of the, come, cover some of the debt service there. And we've made strategic hires last year that, that we put into place, that we're now absorbing the salaries in full for this year. But those hires were strategic in that they, we're, we're hoping that that will enhance efficiency and long term be a long term benefit for the, for the borough.
Scott, can you hold on a second?
Yeah.
When Scott was talking about the health insurance, our health insurance in the last three years was about forty seven percent. Forty seven percent. Now, last year, the borough, we, we were able to switch to a different state insurance over twenty thirty five when New Jersey threw a cap. And with that, we saved about one hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. Well, across the board, the state insurance went up forty seven, forty seven point five percent the last three years. So we're gonna again start digging in and see if we can get into another possible plan with the work on the moment plus. It's straight across the board. It's affecting every municipality, whatever state insurance that you have, everybody's getting hit hard with this.
And so that, the truth is that municipalities are in a state planning, got full impact, but the state negotiates with all the states, that they are officially carrying three percent. They can see based on what we've normally been standing three percent for us. It's how they negotiate, even the state level, that they just, you know, three percent of, that municipalities are in, we're in front of it.
So. Very important. And, and again, because we made that switch last year, we, if we didn't make that switch, we'd be paying another one hundred and thirty thousand dollars on top of it. So from the switch from last year to now, we're actually paying slightly less than we were a year ago, but it's still like a lot across the board.
I do want to mention too, that employees also contribute a portion of their salaries to offset this cost. So when, when the cost goes up for the borough, the contribution cost goes up for the employees also. So. The estimated levy, which is the, I'll, I'll get to that in the next slide, for twenty twenty five is about twenty four million. That's all in. That's your county, open space, schools, plus the municipal portion and the library. And you can see where most of your money goes, right? That, that chart is pretty obvious that the schools are getting about most, what is that? I don't know, sixty percent of, of every hundred dollars, they're getting sixty, okay? So, but borough is the tax collector for everybody. So we take in all the money and then we give the county their share and we give the library their share and we give the, the, the schools their, their big share. And then we have to operate on what's left. Sure.
Um, we've also now, as a municipality, for a long term contract on health insurance, all new employees would be required upon retirement to contribute to their health insurance, or if it was something they receive a full benefit. Both the unions, the D W, the welfare contractor, the issue where it's forward, they have to do their back to retire. So those are efforts that are taking long term, not for, so that we can afford it back to retire.
All right, thank you. So here we go, here we go. What is the tax levy? It's the amount of money that's needed to be raised by equitable distribution among all the borough property owners. So the, the assessor is very busy making an assessment of everybody's property. What is, what is it worth, worth in the, in the market? She tries to gather up all that information. We have a big pot that's becomes the denominator that we're gonna divide our number into, right? So it's the latest property valuation the assessor makes as of October first of the prior year. All right, so, so that's gonna be a, a source, a source of revenue for us because ultimately we're gonna take the amount that we need to balance the budget and divide by that big, that big number, okay? And that's gonna become a, a rate. We're gonna turn that into a rate and that rate times your property is gonna give us the taxes that you want. So we also are kind of constrained, I would say, by two different types of caps. There was a, a cap that was introduced in two thousand seven, no, it was earlier, nineteen seventy seven, I think, was when the first cap was introduced. It was a, a spending cap. In those days, the legislature thought that the best way to keep taxes down was to, was to put a cap on how much a municipality could spend. So it's called an appropriation cap. And in two thousand seven, under Governor Corzine, that cap was set at four percent above the prior year's lev, um. I know, wait, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting mixed up here. This is, this is the levy cap. Okay. All right. I'm talking about the appropriations cap. There's two caps. Appropriations cap was on spending. The levy cap is on how much taxes could go up. And this is what Corzine changed in two thousand seven to four percent. And then Governor Christie reset it to two percent. And so that is the, the cap that has more restraint on our budget. Because we're, we're very limited to how much we can increase taxes. We're also affected by the appropriations cap, so we have to look at both of them. And I'll show you, I'll show you a slide coming up that, that shows you how far or how near or how far we are to those caps. There are circumstances where we can pass increases through and that, that are not controlled by that, by that cap. Those are for new construction, for a debt service, for pension and health benefit contributions in excess of what the state says you're, you're allowed to have. Things like that. And well, I'll, I'll show you that as we get, as we get through this. So we are under the, the levy cap, but with some exclusions. So let's see. Ryan, is there any way to make this any bigger? So this is the state formula that we have to submit with the budget. It's a, it's a, a levy cap calculation where we start with what the prior year amount to be raised by taxes. What, what's the amount that everybody's got to chip into to pay? And last year, it's difficult to say, but it was about six million dollars. Two percent on top of six million is how much? Anybody? Class, class? Come on. One twenty, one twenty. Okay, all right, very good. Not too many math majors here. What were your, poli sci? What? So, okay, about, about a hundred and twenty thousand. That's not, that's not a lot. That's not a lot of money at all. So we have to take some of the inclusions. You'll see in the middle part, in the, in the orange box, there's health insurance premiums that, that are exceptions. There's pension exceptions. There's debt service exceptions. And that, all those are summed to about three hundred thousand dollars. So all together, we're going from, we're allowed to go, the maximum allowable that we're, that we can raise taxes, six point four million, okay? We came in at six point three nine oh, so we're, we're under by about forty thousand, okay? That's, that's the good news. The I don't know if I want to say too much more about that. We, we do add, there is a line to add in for new ratables, new construction. So as, as homes get developed and, and changes are made, we're able to add in those new homes so that they can add to the levy cap that we're allowed to go to. All right. So forty thousand under, which is good. Here's the appropriations cap, nineteen seventy seven somewhere, I think. But it shows, what does it show? That we're allowed two and a half percent or the cost of living adjustment, the COLA, whichever is less, and in twenty twenty five, the two and a half percent allowable increase is eight million sixty four. That includes the same new construction of ten thousand that we saw on the previous slide. And it may be increased, this cap may be increased by up to three and a half percent by ordinance. And tonight, we're going to introduce a cost of living adjustment ordinance to go along with this, to support, to support this. This also creates a cap bank, which is not a bank in the traditional sense. It's just headspace that we could tap into if we need the room in, in future budget years. And we're allowed to bank this for two years. So we're under the appropriations cap by about a hundred and ten thousand. And so, so like I said before, this is not the cap that's more restrictive. It's the other one. Right? That one, we only had forty thousand difference. This one, we have a hundred thousand difference. So the other one is a bit more restrictive. Does that make sense? Okay. Haven't lost you yet. Okay. Alex, are you doing any slides yet? Okay. So in December, I, I, I met with all the departments and we, we started talking about their O N E expenses and all that stuff. And as we're going through different lines and, and such, you know, you come across where on here, you'll see about the government administrative, the percentage went up. And, and that's because of the way we restructured, the way our, our staffing is. That, that would be the communication coordinator, the director of community development. It's all underneath administration now. So. Also, that, that comes into, to play was the debt service and, and a lot of, a lot of that comes into where we had to go with paying down the debt, including projects, including the firehouse and all that. So. The statutory line, there's nothing we could do about that. That's, that's, that's stuff that whether it's a pension and health benefits, there's nothing that we, we can't, there's nothing we can do with those departments. So. Scott, this is you, and I'm back up. So for twenty twenty five, the appropriations are about ten point seven, seven million dollars. It includes, as you can see, salaries is, is one of the larger portions, almost forty percent of that total is, is salaries. We have statutory expenditures, which are the things that we've talked about, the, the pension, the health benefits and, and social security and that. There's a hundred thousand dollar capital contribution that we're gonna use as a down payment on borrowing for larger capital projects. So these are the ones I, I said, it costs over five thousand dollars. They, they have, have to have a useful life of at least five years. It's your bigger ticket items. It's your, it's your dump trucks, your Mason dump trucks, snowplows, servers. We, we also have some things and you'll see in the, in the bond ordinance that's up for introduction tonight. Some of the items that, that are making up the, the twenty twenty five capital plan. So this, I want to point out to you, the portion of the pie in green up there, the reserve for uncollected taxes. What is the reserve for uncollected taxes? We call it the RUT. So the RUT is a way for us to make sure that we can pay the schools and the county and the library and everybody else, and we still have enough to cover our budget. Because not everybody's gonna pay, right? There's gonna be people that forever, whatever reason they, they aren't able to pay. So we need, for every dollar that we need to collect, we have to bill for a dollar one or a dollar two. Okay, that will help us cover those who don't make their payments, but gives us enough money. And that's what that, it's a calculation, the reserve for uncollected taxes. So that, that's a, a statutory required piece to have. And let's see, debt service is a, is a fair sized chunk there. And statutory expenditures, I think we, we talked about it. Other expenses are, are what the department used to operate. It's, it's purchasing, you know, maintenance plans on their, on their equipment. It's, it's a paper, it's toner, it's all that, all the stuff that any business needs to operate. We have that too. So ours is about twenty four percent of our, of the total budget. All right. What about the other side? Because in New Jersey, you have to have a balanced budget. Your expenditures have to equal the money coming in. So the big blue part is how we're relying on all of you with, with property taxes and me and, and mayor and out, and not Alex. Getting, yeah. So, all right, so. We also have a couple of, of different pieces in there too. There's a local revenue share. That's the orange part up there. I guess I could go with my my nope, going backwards. Are you going backwards? Yes, I am. Uh, I, I saw. Okay. Okay, there. There. I don't know. I won't, I won't bother with that. Okay. First day with a new, with a new toy, so. Don't they tell you, like, figure it out before you get up here, right? Note to self. So anyway, budget revenues have to offset the expenditure. So we have some money coming in from state aid. We have surplus. We have local revenues. We have the, the delinquent taxes, other special items and the amount to be raised. Okay. So amount to be raised by taxes, we talked about. You know, for our construction code, that's all of our permits and fees for people who are doing work on their homes or new homes. And, and included in that were all the permits that were taken out for, for the building permits and, and plumbing and electric and all the work that was, that was being done over the nail and the crossing and, and some of the other locations too. So surplus is, is exactly that. We, surplus is money that we have accumulated over the, over the year and we use it strategically to balance the budget. We're, we're trying to use, it, it's like we're walking a tight rope here. And I got the long bar. And I got the long bar I'm holding on to, and this side is surplus and this side is taxes. You know, when you, we're trying to strike that balance as we walk this, this highway. You know, how much do we use in surplus? How much do we want to raise taxes? It's, it really is kind of high wire. But the, the blue portion, the light blue portion, the other special items, that's what we're trying to grow. That's the part, that's the payment in lieu of taxes that some of these developments are, are doing through town. So they don't pay traditional taxes, they pay a payment in lieu of taxes. So the town gets ninety five percent of that money, five percent goes to the county. But as we grow that portion of the budget, we expect the, the dark blue to, to shrink in size somewhat. And that's what, that's what we're trying to do. That's what there's a large focus on. It's going on and been going on for the last couple of years. So, uh, delinquent taxes, of course, are for those, for those folks that, that can't, uh, make their taxes. We sell them the following year. And we, we eventually will collect all the taxes. But we use it as a revenue in the succeeding year and it's about, uh, two percent. All right, what do we have? Okay, so New Jersey has always been based, uh, revenues have always, or taxes anyway, have always been based on property value. And that goes al- also for how the state got money from different entities like the railroads and the utilities and electric companies. So years ago, it was called the franchise. It was a franchise tax. And I'm talking, you know, eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds. It was very preliminary, way back then, they were collecting, you know, a penny per acre, whatever it was on the property that you own. So, so there was a, a tax called the, called the, uh, franchise tax. And then there was another tax called the gross receipts tax. And if they combined, they would have the unfortunate acronym of gross receipts of franchise tax or GRAFT. So, um, but those were eventually replaced, uh, during, um, Governor Whitman's term. Everybody remembers Governor Whitman, uh, by the energy receipts tax. And that was a way that municipalities would get as much of the gross receipts and franchise taxes as, as they had gotten previously. But there was a kicker in there that would, that would escalate every year. Well, what happened was, uh, the state years, I guess, uh, not, not during Governor Whitman's term, but afterwards, the, the state kind of changed their mind on how they were going to, uh, follow that. And they came up with an energy receipts tax and a consolidated municipal property relief tax. And those were supposed to increase over time. But what happened was, they said, okay, we're going to let the energy receipts tax go up, but we're going to let the consolidated municipal property taxes go down so that you would stay, the municipalities would stay flat. That's kind of a brief, brief history of that. And what this chart shows you is if the state funding had continued to increase based on a, on a factor called the implicit price deflator, then we should have gotten what's shown on the red, um, the red graph up there, the red, the red line. We should have gotten that, but we've been flat all these years. So there's a big difference between what we were getting, particularly this year, which is around six hundred thousand. And, and if the state had kept up with their obligation, we would have gotten over a million dollars. So that's part of the problem that, that all municipalities are facing is that the money that was kind of promised back then, it's been altered. We're not going to get it, you know? We do get some, we're happy to get what we get. But, uh, but it, it could have been more. And this, this calculator is off the League of Municipalities website. So thank you, Mayor, for throwing that my way.
So, so obviously it's affecting, you know, involved in this about state is supposed to be giving us more money.
Yeah.
Well, in twenty three, we're supposed to get over a million dollars and we got six hundred thousand.
Right.
And let's face it, tougher on us building a project working around, which should have been funded, which we got statute for it with the state.
Yes.
And there's effort between the League of Municipalities, there's a conference there, it's a force of legislature. Um, and a reinstated fund, we got a little success. For the last or two years ago, we got a little bit of funding.
Hmm.
Um, but the efforts to get back to overtime increment, what we call that is. And I think the important thing to note about the slide is while the cost of everything goes up and with the state is statutory, it promises us, we're left with trying to figure out how we run effective efficient government. We've been bladdering that lot of effort in us after they promised us, but totally put in that red line. So I think the point maybe is this, while we're running, we think of a responsible budget, there's still money on the table that's been bought.
Yep, yep. All right, so I started, uh, talking about the tax rate. And that's, you know, definition wise, it's a multiple layer. Uh, and, and we, we use it to kind of figure out what, what people are going to have to pay for their, on their, on their property. It's based on a hundred dollars of assessed value. It's a, it's a, uh, kind of a, a, a dollar amount per every hundred dollars of, of value that your home has. So the municipal tax rate is the, the total amount that the girl needs to raise through taxes and is divided by the total amount of the value of all of the property. So it's a pretty straightforward calculation. Uh, and this slide shows that, let's see if I can, I can help point this out. I see this, I see the light here, but it doesn't go up there. Why is that? Hmm, okay. Oh, okay, all right. If I do this, well.
Yeah.
All right, so this is a comparison between twenty twenty five and, and twenty twenty four. Our expenditures, the, the top line, the expenditures have increased by seven hundred and seventy thousand over twenty twenty four. While our revenues have increased about three hundred and seventy eight thousand over twenty twenty four. The difference is three hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. That's how much we need to raise to fill in the gap between what we want to spend and the other sources of revenue. Okay, so that, it's a, a three hundred and ninety two thousand. But the value of the property went up significantly last year by, by almost forty six million dollars. Okay, so that has an effect of actually lowering the, making a lower tax rate than it would normally have been if we didn't have that much growth. So the rate is going from a zero point six five for a hundred dollars of assessed value and twenty five to zero point six four. Okay, this is going down actually. Um, which is a good thing, right? So the effect on a, on a home that's assessed at four hundred and, let's say, well, pull a figure out of my hat, four hundred and thirty five thousand dollars is a forty three dollar increase. Okay, so if your property was valued at four hundred and thirty five thousand last year and is still valued at, at that this year, it's a forty three dollar increase. This year's average assessed value is four hundred and sixty one thousand. So if your home was worth four hundred and sixty one thousand last year and this year is worth four hundred and sixty one thousand, it calculates out to about forty six dollars. Slight, slight difference because it's more, it's a higher, it's a higher number. So our tax rate is one, one and a half percent. The increase is one and a half percent. The tax rate is that zero point six four. So whatever your value is, we're going to multiply it by a point six four. Is this where I can go to the, um, sick, I'm sorry, six, five, yes. Is this where I can go to the, uh, tax calculator? So we have this calculator that we set up. It's just an Excel document. Uh, it's the one, yeah, that's it. Yeah, so you can go to the website and, uh, under the tax collector, right, Billy? Uh, the, the taxes, look for the, the department, um, tax collector. And you'll see something that says, uh, calculate my taxes. So this gives a breakdown of what you're going to pay for the municipal portion, the library, the school, uh, county and open space. We don't, I don't have the final figures for, for county or county open space. So this is an estimate for those two. But everything else we know. We know the library portion, we know the municipal and we know the school. Uh, assuming that that, that's going to be passed. And I, I, I think the county, uh, superintendent is going to, is going to let that go through, so no issue. So, so what we're looking at here is a comparison between, uh, can this? Just going to push it up a little bit so you can see. So if your property was worth four hundred and thirty five thousand in twenty twenty four and stays the same, what did we save the increase was? Forty three dollars, right, right? However, if your property goes from four thirty five last year to four sixty one because of a, a rebound, it calculates out to four hundred and eighty five dollar increase, okay? I don't want anybody to be shocked when they go home and they look at their, they get out those little postcards that they bring to the accountant when you have to do your taxes. By the way, what do we have? Less, less impetus. So don't forget, don't forget. The IRS wants to hear from you. So anyway, get out that little postcard because that has what you paid in taxes in twenty twenty four and what your, what your value is in twenty twenty four and your value is in twenty twenty five. Ms. Albertson, you're going to want to look at yours. Your property had, had a change, had a change. Okay, anyway. So this, uh, this particular worksheet lets you see what the change is. How, so in this case, um, the municipal portion is going up about two hundred dollars and the school is going up about two hundred dollars. So, um, but for somebody whose value is not changing, it's not going to be that, that dramatic. And in fact, in fact, put it here. Your value stayed the same, you're likely going to see a decrease. Right? At no time did my, my wrist leave my sleeves, right? You're going to see a decrease. The municipal side went up to forty three dollars, right? But everybody else is kind of going down. So yay for you, you know, good, good on you for, for, uh, so now, now, now you got to go home and look at that card, right? You want to see, you want to see how the change was. And this is just the, the way that the math works is, I'm not doing anything, uh, different. But, um, and you can put, you're only allowed to go in between the, you know, the two. You, you can see the, the person going back and forth, only between those two spots. So it's, it's, uh, pretty foolproof that, that, uh, this will work for you. All right, so that's something that you can do, uh, in your leisure. Let's go back to the snapshot. All right, everybody feel good about this? You, you understand, right? You got the picture? Okay, all right. So tax rate sixty five cents for a hundred dollars, it's an increase of one point five percent. And as we saw, it doesn't necessarily mean an increase or a decrease, right? You have to, you have to see where you were last year and how it compares to this year. All right, so the boroughs portion is about twenty six percent of the total tax bill. And again, we haven't gotten the county final figures yet. I made an estimate, you know, who knows what it's really going to be. And that will affect these, these numbers in the end. But the other, the other question is, is how did your value change?
I'm sorry, I think it's just very important to make the comparison. We don't send the budgets outside of our own budget, like, like the other tax, we just, we just, like, third factor, it's giving it down. So we get the bill, ten thousand dollars, we get twenty six hundred dollars for a year for world, and then there are any valid, they have public, they have the other factor, largest thing you could benefit. They could two hundred thousand dollars.
Yep. Okay. All right, so in twenty twenty five, the average home, um, and there's no average homes. And now we're all above average, right? Like, like Wobegon. Uh, the average assessment, four hundred and sixty one thousand. The municipal portion in total is about three thousand as we, as we talked about. And here's the, we do have a page on the website that has the, uh, the budget and also the calculator, um, at that, at that website, right? Yeah, that's a good, that's a good link, right? Yeah. All right, Alex, this is you, right?
We, we talk about the average home paying taxes, a tax rate of eight dollars and twenty two cents per day. All right, and what do you get out of that eight dollars and twenty two cents per day is all the different, uh, all those different departments and all the different, uh, avenues of where your tax dollars going. So we'll just do a little. Your day starts off, you take a shower, the water is going down in the drain, it's going to the store water, which is madness by the borough. Get out on the road, you're driving down the road, you come to an intersection and there at the intersection is a crossing guard, which is our employee working, doing a crossing guard. Might drive down the road a little bit further and there might be an accident. Who's on the scene for the accident? Your police department, our, our finest, police department, fire department, rescue squad, borough, borough, uh, borough funds. Get to work, you get an alert. The, uh, communication coordinator sends you a message that the DOT project on Second Street Road is now open. Okay, that's borough employee giving you the message that a borough, borough project is open, where your tax dollars are going. Get home, grab something to eat. Actually, before you go home, you guys, something to eat, you have to go, go, uh, get your dog license. You stop over, and where do you get your, your dog license? From borough employee. Then you go home, grab a quick lunch, uh, quick dinner. And now you got to go down to T Block, uh, game at McCoy Park. Park maintained by borough employee. And ran by a borough employee running the, uh, rec program. Leave the ballgame, start driving home, it's getting dark, the lights are on. Where is that from? It's the taxes, all the taxes that you're paying. And that eight dollars and twenty two cents is going to all those things that just came across your plate. A lot of times, things that you just take for granted, that you don't think about when you're paying your taxes, it is what you're, you're paying for. It was a project that we worked on when we were in one of our classes. So when you look at the, uh, public safety, uh, this past, in twenty twenty four, the police had two, twenty thousand, one hundred and forty four calls to service. The fire department had three hundred and ten, uh, incidents. First aid, rescue squad responded to three, over three hundred calls. Code enforcement had six hundred and eighty seven, uh, inspections. Infrastructure, okay? This past year with infrastructure is that we, uh, repair a lot of sanitary storm, uh, sections. Along the way, we, we have increased in the borough seventeen new, uh, storm, uh, catch faces. This past year, we put in eleven hundred linear feet of curving on some of the road projects. Uh, and along the way, we also had some, uh, safety enhancements because we want to make sure everything is safe for our residents. Last but not least, the past year, we had one point eight miles of, of roads newly paved. Uh, Public Works, as always, they're just, they're, they're doing the park maintenance, maintaining the grass, curbside pickup, uh, multiple months a year where they're picking up leaf bags, picking up branches. The, this past year, they did three hundred and ten miles of street sweeping. That's a lot of times around the town. Uh, other than that, they're doing their, their, their daily tasks of, uh, winterizing, plowing streets, salting, and et cetera. Every year, they go through, keep, uh, inspecting and cleaning all of our catch spaces. And then you want to get, go over to, we talk about our community events, you know, our recreation programs, our sports programs, our senior bus, our, our senior programs, music in the park, all, all the stuff that, all the funds that the tax dollars go in towards, to all the operations of different departments.
So included in the in the operating budget is a is a plan, is a capital plan, they call it. And we're enacting that that plan tonight with what's called a bond ordinance that will authorize almost three point four million dollars in spending. And this is for, I think I mentioned the Mason Dump Truck. It's for it's for street roadway improvements on on Second Street. It's for mill and pave on some of the some of the smaller streets that we do along with Middlesex County. It's IT improvements. It's it's a plow. There's a plow in there. There's I forget what else is included in this, but it's it's in your packets tonight, council. It's in your packets for for review for the introduction of this of this bond ordinance. Yes. Streetscape, streetscape, mm hmm, mm hmm, right, right, mm hmm, assessment, the Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so so all together. And then we also did a another bond ordinance earlier this year. It just escapes me what what it was for, but I I wanna take this point to mention that these big ticket items, we pay for them by borrowing money and then we have to pay the interest and the principal on that in in successive years. So we have a combination of short and long term borrowing that we do. And the the short term borrowing is for a year usually, and we just recently sold about seven million dollars in a short term note that we had a a pretty different process for where we went, we took bids electronically as well as, you know, sent in by by email. We had we had two bids that that differed by about I don't know, in the interest. So the way the way the way companies bid on this is how much interest are they gonna pay on your seven million dollars, seven and a half million dollars? So the difference in in interest wound up being about five thousand dollars. That was the difference between the two bids. So we got the the winning bid was a coupon rate of three and a half percent, which is excellent. Right? The other the other bid was four percent, but they had a a what they call a premium, which they were willing to give us more money than we were asking for. But when you look at the those two bids, the difference comes to about five thousand dollars. So that's that's pretty impressive. We're borrowing we're borrowing seven and a half million dollars and and the difference in the in the interest is about five thousand dollars. So that's my notice to the Borough Council that the results of the bond sale. So so next year, we'll be renewing that note, maybe maybe including some of this new material that we want to purchase. So we can expect that that the interest cost, of course, is gonna go up, but we're gonna keep an eye on when to go out and when to borrow for these things so that we do are doing it with an eye to to, you know, what the market is doing and and try and stay and try and get as as competitive bids as we can. So let's see, I should mention that that of that three point, almost three point five million dollars in spending, over a million of that, almost one point two million is supported by grants. So that means we don't have to borrow that money. Right? It's it's being paid for by grants. Mostly, it's Department of Transportation grants, but it's also let's see, it's DOT infrastructure grants and and there's another one, the hundred and seventy. That's DOT. Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah. So so seeking the grants, seeking out grant opportunities is is something that we can do and try to lower what the overall cost is gonna be to the to the borough. So the capital plan that's included in the budget is does not appropriate or authorize the expenditure of any funds, but it's it's a recommended plan. However, the ordinance that we're gonna introduce tonight is the first shot at spending that money. So you can you can think of it as you get a couple bites of the apple here, right? So the the first, the very first bite is in the capital plan. And our capital plan is pretty much based on the ordinance that you're gonna see tonight, the three point four million. The the bond being being introduced, that's another bite of the apple. In two weeks, we're gonna have the public hearing and adoption of that ordinance. So it's another another bite at the apple and then the spending can happen, not before. Okay, so that's what I mean. You have a couple bites of the apple council before you before anybody, you know, actually spends any money. All right. So yes, that last line, the Borough Council will need to take additional action to execute the proposals. So. I love that question mark because it looks like an upside down S, right? Right? What fault is that? I don't know. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Spellbound, huh? Okay, all right. Thank you all. And on to the business at hand, right?
Next on our agenda. Excuse me. It's a proclamation celebrating April as National Volunteer Month, and we have a few volunteers here this evening that have decided to volunteered to read the proclamation on volunteering. So welcome Peg Lockwood, Chair of the DDMO and also still Secretary of Denellin Arts and Inclusion Culture Commission, Sharonda Weiss Shimp, who is the Vice Chair of the Denellin Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission, as well as a Board of Directors member to the Board of Trustees and a Board of Education member, and then Mary Ann Myers, who is the Chairwoman of the Denellin Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission. So welcome.
I can start it? All right. Whereas National Volunteer Month is celebrated throughout the United States of America each year in the month of April. And whereas it is time to celebrate and recognize the contribution of volunteers and serves as an opportunity to join the impact of volunteerism and encourage more people to get involved in their local communities. And whereas volunteering in Denellin benefits our community and provides our volunteers with unique opportunities to meet new people, learn new skills and make a difference in the lives of others. And whereas the Borough of Denellin offers volunteering opportunities for individuals of all interests through the Denellin Planning Board, Denellin Library Board of Trustees, Shade Tree Commission, Denellin Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission, Denellin Downtown Management Organization, Parks and Recreation Commission, Denellin Municipal Alliance, Denellin Parking Authority, Denellin Fire Department, Denellin Rescue Squad, Mauer House Restoration Committee, Mayor's Traffic and Pedestrian Task Force, Office of Emergency and Management, Mayor's Cannabis Task Force and Denellin Green Team Advisory Committee and
Whereas the Borough of Denellin is home to countless volunteers who meaningfully give back to our Miracle Mall and donate their time and effort to improve daily life for residents and visitors alike. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that Mayor Jason F. Salento and the Denellin Borough Council recognized April twenty twenty five as National Volunteer Month in the Borough of Denellin and encourage residents to join us in celebrating the many ways our volunteers contribute to and improve our borough. Jason F. Salento, Mayor, Borough of Denellin, April seventh, twenty twenty five.
And Mary Ann for your volunteerism, as well as all the volunteers that make up our volunteer agencies and organizations in the borough, both municipal, RAN, as well as the nonprofits that are in the town. Our town's able to do what it does because of the countless hours and efforts of our volunteers. So thank you and another round of applause for all our volunteers. Thank you. Item number five on the agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes, our regular meeting of March eighteenth, two thousand twenty five. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Any comments, additions, redactions as the meeting minutes currently stand? Without hearing any roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Okay, item number six on the agenda is the introduction of ordinances. We have three this evening, twenty twenty five dash zero nine, twenty twenty five dash ten and twenty twenty five dash eleven. So can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty five dash zero nine and ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank for calendar year two thousand twenty five?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Not here now. Oh, my God.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Upstate.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty five dash ten and ordinance to amend the general legislation of the Borough of Denellin Municipal Code, Chapter two zero four, Parks and Playground, Section four, Sporting Events and Water Activities, Use of Vehicles?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
I'll just note for the record before we take roll call, this is adding G, letter G, to Section one, which is no person shall ride or drive e-bikes, motorized scooters, or other motorized vehicles within any park or playground. This prohibition shall not apply to the use of motorized scooters or vehicles by persons with disabilities. This is being done because we've had an issue with these motorized or electric bikes going through our parks and disturbing the peace and passive recreation and also on our facilities. So that's why this is being presented. So this is an introduction. The hearing and possible adoption will be at the next council meeting. So that's why this is being introduced. Can I have a roll call? Do we do motion in second? Yeah, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty five dash eleven? Bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the Borough of Denellin appropriating three million three hundred and thirty eight thousand seven hundred dollars, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million three hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and forty dollars bonds or notes. Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Upstate.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Item number seven on the agenda is resolutions. We have resolutions one fifty four through one seventy one with exception of one fifty five, which we voted on earlier this evening. So Mrs. Stat, if you could take the motion in second and then just let us discuss it, need be.
Resolution number one fifty four is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rio.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one fifty six is to hire Dana Downing as yoga instructor for the spring season for the Denellin Recreation Department.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one fifty seven is to hire Sheila Dai as a music instruction instructor for the Denellin Recreation Department.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one fifty eight is to support the submission of application for the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Transportation Alternatives Program.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one fifty nine is to award a contract to Verizon for police vehicle laptop computers, air cards.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
I have a question.
Sure.
Air cards, there was a term here about over usage and an additional hundred dollars for that. If there could just be some more clarification on what these air cards are for and how would you overuse them? Okay, and then what does over usage refer to? And just to be clear, because I'm not familiar with air cards or any of the technology used in police vehicles, but what is the purpose of the air card?
The air card is for the internet access, so then you can get through DMV, you know, brakes, monitors.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And you'll get clarification from Debbie?
Yes, for tomorrow.
Thank you.
Resolution number one sixty is awarding a contract to D and D Painters for the exterior painting of the Mauer House not to exceed thirty two hundred dollars.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
This is specifically painting. Okay. Okay. And everything that would potentially cause more damage after painting has been remediated, like the gutters and everything? I'm like even the I'm talking about like the gutters that were leaking like. Okay.
Yes, I have a question. Is this gonna be some kind of like waterproof painting paint or like an industrial kind of weatherproof paint?
To make exterior, right? Any other questions? Thank you.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-one is introducing the twenty twenty-five municipal budget.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, one day, uh, this uh. Resolution has somewhat uh. Unusual and unique situation involved with it, but I'd like to just explain. So that the council public is aware, the situation, uh. The Danell municipal budget is required by law to be introduced and adopted. Within a very specific timeframe and time limits. The public hearing on this has to be uh, May fifth. Uh, the uh. We should note that Councilman Scott is the chief of Danell by volunteer fire department, Councilwoman Rios is a volunteer member. Certainly, they don't have any financial interest in. In that organization, but I would note that the budget includes uh, funds appropriate for use by the fire department. Uh, the question is whether or not. Uh, council members uh, can vote on the introduction and adoption of uh, budget. Uh, the unusual situation is that the budget requires uh, it to be passed by a majority of the full governing body. Would be four members. And due to uh, significant medical. Reasons, I anticipate it, Councilman Vanamar is is not here or able to uh, vote. On the budget. Uh, as a result, we have a situation where uh, there would not be sufficient council members available. Uh, to pass the budget, which is uh, great significance to boroughs legally has to be done. Uh, and so I've looked at the issue and the question is uh, whether or not. Uh, the council members who are members of the fire department uh, can or should or are obligated to vote on budget resolution. Uh, I would note that the uh, local government ethics law uh, would preclude a government officer from. Uh, voting on any matter in which they have direct, indirect personal financial interest. Uh, in this particular case, there's absolutely no suggestion that either of those members has any personal uh. Or direct financial interest uh, in. In the budget, in particular, funds allocated to the police department. Uh, however, there are some, uh, number of fire department, there are a number of cases uh, that do suggest that a. Member of a organization such as a church or an organization, uh, they, those members. Uh, uh, would be having imputed disqualification uh, if they're a member of council. Supreme Court, however, in case of diversity, has indicated that that's not a bright line rule and that uh. Sometimes that can be unnecessary and unjust. In particular, uh, these notorious, uh, this case at Berkeley Heights. Uh, we dealt and distinguished between council members, one who held a leadership position. In a church church organization, another council member who was a a member and moderately involved, but had no. Active participation, no knowledge of any legal proceedings whatsoever. And in in this particular case, I think uh, it's important to distinguish between Councilman Scott, who has a leadership position in the fire department. And uh, Councilwoman Rios, who is a member, an active member of the fire department, but has no uh, leadership. Uh, interests, uh, and again, certainly no personal or financial uh, interest in the uh, budget monies appropriate to the fire department. On on top of that, there is also something known as a doctrine necessity or a rule of necessity. And while it's very limited and circumscribed, there are situations in which a public body simply cannot act. If there are enough members uh, who could take action. And to the extent, even if there was uh, a a conflict in this particular situation. Uh, I've looked at the cases in in particular, Allen versus Combs River. Regional Board of Education, which involved a very similar situation to this. Uh, the courts acknowledged that the rule of necessity wo- would apply. And that a conflict would and would need to be waived in order for a budget to be passing. Or municipal body to do its statutorily required duty. So, un- under all the circumstances, my advice to Councilwoman uh, Rios. And to Councilman Scott and to Borough Council is that, that Councilwoman Rios, in 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 my opinion. And I've advised her as such is that uh, she may and should uh. Vote on the budget, Councilman Scott, uh, because it's only necessary that one of the members vote. Councilman Scott has uh, more of the leadership interest. I would recommend that he not participate or vote on the budget resolution. Uh, but again, I I do believe that to the limited extent that there may be. Conflict for a Councilwoman Rios, that under the circumstances in this case. Uh, that any, that it's simply, there's an obligation to vote on this so that the budget can be introduced. Uh, that my recommendation is, and opinion is, that that the any conflict to the extent it exists should be waived. And that you may and should vote on this, in this resolution.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robertson. Whatever do, let's take a roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Abstained.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one sixty-two is to authorize a self-examination of the budget.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Lance.
So if I could just jump in, what this, what this is, um. Every certain, every few years, the Division of Local Government Services reviews the budget. And they do that on years when the, when the borough is ineligible to self-review. Uh, it's been a while since we, we have been allowed to be self-reviewed, mostly because of the. The American Rescue Plan Act and. Steps that we took when COVID uh, was moving on, but uh, we didn't qualify. For self review, generally, we've taken this amount of time to get to a point where we are now eligible for self review. What that means is that. We will take a look at the items that the state would otherwise take. Uh, are we, did we budget enough for debt service? Are are estimates of revenues reasonable? Uh, there's a number of items like that 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 can look at. Um, the auditors have already reviewed the budget and they've signed off on it, so they're comfortable with the the figures. I mean, it's well, so at at this point, in order to. To keep it, that that we are doing the review, council would pass this resolution and. I think it's, it's supposed to be every, once every three years, the division wants to look at the budget. Maybe keep it by, there's still gotta look at it, but not to the extent that it would, if we can ask them to, or that would be. So, we are eligible and so that's why you haven't seen this, for those that have been on the council for that. It's why you haven't seen this resolution.
Thank you. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Just clarification, budget, so I would abstain, correct?
Don't know that it's necessary in this particular case.
Do it for good measure.
Yeah.
Just do it for good measure.
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-three is to amend the twenty twenty-five temporary capital budget.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
So, before, if I, Mayor, I'd like to just jump in, be, before the the budget is adopted. Uh, which includes the the capital plan, um, and where there's interest in, in. Adopting a bond ordinance, which was introduced previously tonight. Um, we also need to amend the temporary capital budget. So, remember that the, that the first ordinance that we gave a few months, well, February, was a feasibility study. So, at that time, we had, we had the temporary capital budget that only included that particular. Now, with the ordinance that was introduced tonight and that one. I gather all of that information together, it's, it's now the amended temporary capital budget. It includes. Everything that is on the bond ordinance that you've seen, plus the feasibility stuff. So, this is just, this is amending the the temporary capital budget and. Once the budget is adopted, then you probably won't need to do any more of this.
Okay.
And uh, Mr. Olson, this only requires a majority vote, not the majority of voting membership. So, the Councilwoman Rios could could abstain on this, so we could still move forward, but correct?
Yes, this doesn't include uh, appropriation for.
So, my suggestion would be that Councilman Scott and Councilwoman Rios abstain on this, since there's not the requirement of the. For voting members, this can be done by just a majority of members, president.
Okay.
Was suggested.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a roll call. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Abstained.
Mr. Scott?
Abstained.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-four is to appoint Ken Hing as a fire department member.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
Well, before we vote, I'll just say thank you for him stepping forward and volunteering, especially during Volunteer Month.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Abstained.
Mr. Scott?
Abstained.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
You know, Mr. Olson, really quick, I meant to say after the presentation, if being a CFO is not, you know, your long-term, you know, thing. After how many years, you know, you give yourself a mic, you're quite the stand-up, so you know, maybe uh, amateur hour at a, the stress factor might be good. Take it on the road.
Okay, resolution number one sixty-five is to request adding an increase in the amount of change kept on hand in the clerk's office.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigmund?
Why did you say? This was a recommendation of our auditors, then we had their.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-six is to avail the borough as a statutory due date extension.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Rios?
The floor is all yours, whenever you need it, Scott.
Uh, so, so there was a local finance notice that came out uh, not too long ago. Regarding the the statutory de茧 for the, for the budget, okay? February tenth is the actual statutory due date for when the budget is supposed to be introduced. And they, they extended it to March uh, thirty-first or the first meeting there. And it said, within the the text of the local finance notice, to avail yourself of the these days. Adopt this resolution. So, we are availing ourselves of the day. This is, this is a belt and suspenders kind of way of approaching this. Some of my colleagues uh, um, are questioning what the, the need, the necessity for doing this, but like I said, it's belt and suspenders. So, it, it doesn't do any harm.
I'll take a roll.
First time we've seen, so.
Okay.
It's first time it's been, it was noted in the.
And it's belt senses others. And you do metaphors, this is great. Love you, Scott.
Okay, Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-seven is to approve a shared services agreement with Middlesex County Department Authority for Recycling Collection Services.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
Mr. Miller, do you want to address this one?
Sure. Okay, um, the rest, what should you uh, do with the shared service with uh, uh, Middlesex County? So, it's been in the works for a while and looking at is the um. NCI is gonna be providing uh, ninety-five gallon uh. Uh, recycling, I think, for all the residents. With a lot of going back and forth on how it operates in their place, uh, schedule will be the same. Um, the, the um. Company that's, that's, at those recycling will be delivering each container to each residential home. So, they'll be shut off, wherever residents will be, they're, they're uh, contained. The uh, the recycling containers that people have now, you can do it to two fifty, keep it. Or you can put it out on the curb and the county will take those recycling. Um, and they're expecting this to all come into play sometime in the summer. They're gonna provide uh, a, a, a container for each resident, there will not be a serial number on the container still. And then they'll provide some extra ones for the borough, so uh, any new residents. Uh, if any of your house come into play, they'll be able to get them.
How's it gonna work with like the Main Street uh, buildings?
Same thing, just like where, you know, there's a seventeen, um, it's like one, you just have. Across from uh, you know, um, Subcocks, which uh, a couple of the fans, you know, obviously won't be this mad, but it'll be not very much.
Okay.
This'll be bigger.
What happens when there's a, there's a car in front of it?
Um, that's your question, they're gonna probably, they're gonna probably have to put up where there's no parking area.
Where did, what time do they start? In the morning?
Uh, they usually start around seven AM.
And our, what time is our no parking ordinance until on Main Street?
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, it might be, it might be where we work with the county that they hit the downtown first, because after a certain hour, people can start parking again. And we need to make sure their signs go up in the downtown.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we're, we're, uh, by the way, it's on that, we're straight on the forehead, under the.
And the police have been advised of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just waiting on the next.
Yeah.
So, questions, um, I'm sorry if you've already said this, but how many containers per household?
One.
One, okay.
They're, they're large, I mean, I have, I have one in my house. For eighteen years, so it seems less than one.
Okay, and we'll. Okay, that was a question. Um, the other one is, I'm assuming that there'll be some communication about. Um, the rolling out of the new company?
Yeah, as, as we're getting closer to a day, the county will, will, uh, so. But many ways we can't get out for that.
When's the next insert, Miller?
Um, June.
Because even if we don't have an exact date, we, at least we know that goes to every single door, and we can say a general announcement.
Yeah, you do that.
Okay, that's a great point, Councilman.
Yeah, and um, because you are not expecting this to fully roll out until sometime in the summer. Um, it seems that the agreement here is for three years at a time. Um, what's being done from now until the summer?
What happens if there is overflow? Like you have, you know, somebody has an Amazon purchase addiction and there's. What happens if there is overflow? Like you have, you know, somebody has an Amazon purchase addiction and there's so many bashing. Not speaking by personal.
Experience?
Saying.
I, um, I, I've got, I've got experience myself. Um, you can't, you put the board and, and that's the container, but something like this forward for the next round. They do get a lot in those containers.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-eight is authorizing the release of the cash performance guarantee for work.
Bless you.
Work performed at one fifty North Avenue, block one, lot fourteen.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-nine is to authorize professional services for general engineering to CME associates for the Mauer House assessment.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Do you know how long this process is going to take?
Um, it should only take a couple of months.
Okay. Okay, that's it for me. Counsel?
Okay, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy is to award a contract to Garden State Paving Solutions for the milling and paving of Second Street for amount not to exceed a hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty and seventy-four cents.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Uh, on this part of Second Street, just wanted to be clear that this is, uh, the shortest place in town, West Side Corner. The other part of, uh, Second Street, the Schwartz going to Madison Avenue, part of the fifty-five. This, the, the work that will be done on this section will match the same one that's been done, like they, you want that one plot today. So however, uh, so the same work can be done, there were, there's, uh, and, uh, more than that. You know, a page and, uh, and the VA terms as well as the company. Pretty broad, I think, uh, you're trying to do it top.
As close to as possible.
I do have a big enough. I felt the energy, if, if the, um, the project starts under DOT, if they start, sure, it's going forward to Madison, we give them multiple weeks.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong and if I'm recalling my, recalling this correctly, we, you know, we did request through the engineers when we went to go bid for the project with DOT, could this be extended? And they had advised because the grant was only specific and the, the application was specific that we couldn't. So that's why it had to be done separately.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one seventy-one is to award a contract to Garden State Paving Solutions for the repair of the ADA ramp at the Denon Public Library for an amount not to exceed six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes, um, I mean, off the ground. I want to, uh, to, 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 to.
The ADA ramp there right now, it's elevated, opposition property. So when they're coming, they're, they're doing, starting to pull off, they're coming in and they'll take up the old concrete, refresh it pretty great. Make sure everything is flush. This way, if somebody's coming up with a, a good job, like a walker, you have to know that.
And the other.
You can replace the tire and you can replace the, the portion back.
The other reasoning is, is because we're doing the, the facility assessment for the library. And this is an immediate need to make sure it's in code also because we're also having the election. There's two voting districts there. So, um, this is an immediate fix that needs to be done to make it compliant, not just for generally being compliant, but we're on a, a timeline due to the election. So this is a, a micro improvement. And then we're looking at through the assessment when it comes across our desk, the councils, um, what other improvements need to be done. So.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Okay, item number eight on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have resolutions one seventy-two through one seventy-eight. Please take a glance at it. Any resolutions you wish to be taken out, please let us know.
One seventy-three.
One seventy-three, okay. Okay. And we have a motion and second on one seventy-two through one seventy-eight, uh, absent of one seventy-three.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Never motion and second on one, resolution one seventy-three.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
So just a question on the amount that's to be refunded. Is there an amount and can it be shared?
So I believe, um, the escrow that they provided was five thousand, two hundred and fifty initially. And then there's, uh, been accrued interest, a couple hundred dollars accrued interest. So I think it's fifty-four and about.
Question. So we've, we've spoken to all the professionals, everybody that would be hitting to the escrow. They, they are fully made whole before we release this money.
I believe Derek White did that, he did.
Okay, if that's the case, I would ask that we get a balance on here and we table this to the next council meeting. But the escrow in the grand scheme of things, it is their money, absent if the, if the professionals have not charged against it and made whole. Um, basically what's being returned is the money that is left over in the escrow that was not spent in theory, but, um, and because the project did not come through, so we have to return the money. But we need to just, we need to make sure that, that, uh, it's been analyzed.
No, this was from five oh one North Ave portfolios. DEV zero two two. Yeah, you're thinking of, uh, one fifty.
Right.
Okay, so let's just do this. Let's get a, a firm answer. Make sure the professionals that would have had to charge his count from our end actually did that. So they're made whole. Um, and, uh, just what the number would be after we understand what that balance is going to be. Okay?
Yeah.
And someone just notify, uh, developers that we tabled it. So this way, you know, they're aware of the situation too. Thank you. Do we need a moment for a table?
Uh, yes.
Can I have a motion and second? The table resolution one seventy-three. Move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine is council reports. Council members. Councilmember Albertson.
Fire department responded to twenty-eight calls, uh, for service in March. And total calls for twenty twenty-five are ninety-three. Incident types were fire, nine, false alarm, nine, service call, one, hazmat, six, good intent, two, monthly total of twenty-eight. Members attended several events and held several drills during February. On the tenth, they held a monthly officers' meeting and work drill. On the fifteenth, they assisted at the Greenbrook Fire Department taking down the star display at House Two. On the nineteenth, members were recertified in CPR. On the twenty-second, they emptied the storage unit of the last items to return to the firehouse. On the twenty-sixth, they held their monthly fire company meeting. On the twenty-ninth, they stood by at the LRWP runoff five K. They're happy to see a number of members joining the department for the past few months. New members will be attending fire school in the upcoming months. Fire department is still looking for new members to join. Our department membership is open to anyone sixteen to eighteen as a junior member and full member is open to anyone over eighteen. Visit their website at www.denellenfd.com or email joinfd@denellenfd.com for more information. The Friends of the Denon Public Library are having their murder mystery dinner on May tenth at the George W. Hodglick Firehouse. Um, interested in tickets, please, uh, get in touch with us through the library or you can check out Facebook and get information there. Our open air market begins on May fourth. Downtown Denon Management Organization will join us with their annual spring into wellness event. Visit us at Washington Memorial Park between eleven AM and three PM. If you're interested in being a vendor, contact them at friendsofthedenelonlibrary@gmail.com. Proceeds from Friends fundraising events help to provide programs such as the the, uh, Women's History Program, as well as Museum Passes, Summer Reading Program events and prizes and so much more. Follow the Friends on Facebook and Instagram. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rios?
Yes. Buildings and ground report. DPW has completed work on the new multipurpose office. DPW and School Co., groundskeeper continue to maintain the borough's ball fields in preparation for the spring season. Weather permitting, six trees downtown are scheduled to be replaced this week. Afterward, DPW will plant topsoil, mulch and mulch around all new trees to complete the project. An additional order of blocks has been placed so that DPW can continue installing block borders around the planters at Washington Memorial Park. Parsa report. P S, P S E N G replaced a section of the sewer main on Pulaski Street between the Culvert and South Avenue. This section was damaged during the installation of a new gas service line to a home on Pulaski Street. Parsa was on-site to oversee the repair. Board of Ed, the public hearing and adoption on the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school budget will be held on Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM at Lincoln Middle School. The next Board of Ed meeting will be scheduled for April eighth at seven PM. Spring break will take place April fourteenth through April eighteenth. So always please be extra cautious when driving around town, especially during spring break as children will be riding bikes, hopefully, playing ball and enjoying the nicer weather. A huge thanks to the parents who have volunteered this seasons for the season soccer program. Your support makes these programs possible and we know the kids are excited for the upcoming spring clinic and the library. Check out these upcoming programs at the Denon Public Library. Adult Bingo, April tenth. Adult Paint Along, April thirtieth. Teen Butterfly Tea Party, April thirtieth. Teen and tween Dungeons and Dragons, April twenty-ninth at three thirty. For more details and additional programs, please visit the Denon Library's website and follow them on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lance?
Yes, for, um, the recreation department. Denon's annual Easter egg hunt is scheduled for the Sunday, April thirteenth at Columbia Park, kicking off promptly at one PM. This event is exclusively for Denon residents, children pre-K through third grade. Don't forget to bring a basket and arrive on time. Stick around after the hunt for a photo opportunity with the Easter bunny. And play ball. Join us for our opening day parade and ceremony on Saturday, April twenty-sixth at ten AM. The parade will kick off at Washington Park and proceed north along Washington Ave to McCoy Park, where the opening day ceremony will be held. Teens should gather at Washington Park by nine forty AM. After the ceremony, stick around for our volunteer picnic. This year, our volunteer picnic day will align with opening day festivities. Enjoy games, music, food, baseball and much more. Take this opportunity to connect with the volunteers in our community. Interested in becoming a volunteer? This is the perfect chance to find out more. And softball season kicks off this week in the Somerville League. Our rookies will play their inaugural home game at, on April ninth at Faber Field, starting at six PM. Meanwhile, our minors were scheduled to play their first game tonight, but it was rained out. We look forward to cheering on our softball teams this season. Whether you're a player, coach or supportive family member, your enthusiasm and encouragement make all the difference. Best of luck to the Little Lady Destroyers, wishing you a fantastic season ahead. And with that said, Denon Recreation extends heartfelt thanks to all our parent volunteer coaches. Your dedication allows us to provide a wide range of programs for our youngest Denon residents, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Council President Sigmund?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank Scott and Alex for all their hard work on the budget and bringing some, uh, joy and merriment to what can oftentimes be a tedious process. Um, and the way you presented it, the Alex with actually walking the budget through our day, I think that was a really good spin. So thank you all for your hard work. And also, um, another call for volunteers. Seems like everyone's doing that now, really are the backbone of what happens here. Uh, so if you have the time, I highly recommend you volunteer your services to help others and you will also get some joy and merriment out of that as well. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Scott?
A short sweep for public works. They continue to inspect and clean the catch bases throughout the borough. They completed the multipurpose office. Continue brick repair around the new downtown trees. They walk the brooks and streams to clear debris as needed, cleared the catch base and lids throughout the borough, cleared the debris from the trash trap and continue to prep work for the ball fields for the upcoming sporting season. And a reminder, curbside branch pickup takes place in March and April, so the end of the month will be it for curbside. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm just writing one last thought down. I apologize. Okay, there we go. Okie dokie. Um, National Volunteer Month, I think we've, uh, we're driving that home tonight, but I would also like to express my sincere gratitude to Peg Lockwood, Marian Myers and Sharonda Weiss Shimp, three of our many dedicated volunteers for joining us this evening to read the proclamation celebrating National Volunteer Month here in Denon. Uh, as part of the National Volunteer Month, we will be hosting a mayor old town hall focused on volunteerism on Wednesday, April twenty-third at seven PM at the George W. Hodglick Firehouse. Attendees will have the opportunity to learn more about Denon's boards and commissions directly from some of the volunteers who helped shape our borough and hopefully inspire, um, to get involved too. Additionally, as mentioned in tonight's recreation port, the second annual volunteer picnic day will be held during the same week on Saturday, April twenty-sixth. We are incredibly grateful for our many volunteers and look forward to celebrating their contributions to our community. Um, Gentle Family Dentistry, tenth anniversary. I'd also like to extend a congratulations to Gentle Family Dentistry, Dr. Seema Mian and her wonderful staff and family on celebrating their tenth anniversary this past Saturday. Uh, what started as a part-time practice in April of two thousand fifteen has grown into a thriving full-time dental office and we wish them continued success for many more years to come. Second Street Phase One, which is Second Street and Madison Avenue to Schwartz Place. Uh, the contractor has confirmed that the project is set to begin on the week of April twenty-eighth. The first phase will focus on curb restoration during which the contractor will remove severely damaged curbs and driveway aprons, aprons, uh, one side of the street at a time. The contractor expects to work on four driveway aprons at a time. During this process, residents may experience up to three days where they cannot access their driveways. Excuse me, weather permitting. So appropriate notice will be sent out to those residents. Um, and we ask for your patience. It's a, it's a short-term inconvenience for a long-term, um, improvement.
We'll make sure.
Yeah. And as I noted to Pete, he's here so frequently, might as well just buy real estate at this point. Um, Washington Avenue Streetlight Project, last week, our engineers from CME met with PSCNG and NJDOT to discuss the project.